Seeing that it's 7:01 or 7:02, this broadcast is, obviously broadcast is being broadcast. This meeting's being broadcast. If anybody's looking to broadcast or tape it, you have to identify it to the chair. Anybody looking to tape at all, aside from this? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to call this meeting to order.
So moved.
And acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Looking at the second agenda item, which is the walk-in period, I ask, are there any walk-ins? Seeing none, I'd like to move on to the third item, which is a discussion vote, outdoor entertainment permit for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club. I was wondering if maybe we move this to the end of the meeting? I take that back. Is there somebody here on behalf of the Situate Harbor Yacht Club? Would you please come forward? And what you're looking for, could you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Kim Brown. I'm with the Situate Harbor Yacht Club, and we are wondering if it's possible to have an outdoor entertainment this Friday for Luminary Night from 6:00 to 10:00. It's for families, and it's a great time. And I think one of the board members is coming to the party.
See, well, I'm not sure. I wasn't invited, so I'm not sure which board member you're referencing here.
Make a motion.
I guess that's it. Kim Brown is with on 10th, your address, just for the record.
Yep, for 10th Avenue.
For 10th Avenue, okay. And it's a disc jockey playing amplified music. We've approved other things like this for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club this year. There have been no complaints. Aside from that, any comments from the board?
I think this is an annual event, isn't it?
It is, yeah, every year. It's Luminary Night.
And we've had no complaints in the past, so I'm all in favor.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to the Situate Harbor Yacht Club, 84 Jericho Road, for a disc jockey playing amplified music at Luminary Night function to be held on Friday, August 6, 2010, from 6:00 PM till 10:00 PM. All immediate neighbors must be notified of this event.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Murray. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Moving on to agenda item number four, discussion vote of a Hocker Peddler's license for the farmer's market, and an ice cream chuck, and, if I'm not mistaken, the third one, which is Gorilla Enterprises. So, first, who is here on behalf of, is Barbara Keef? Could you please come on up to the microphone, please? Identify yourself and your address. It looks like 28 Central Park, Situate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I'm Barbara Keef.
And you're looking to get a Hocker Peddler's license to sell eco-friendly products. Just, what exactly are you looking to sell? I know it's eco, so it's environmentally sound, but what exactly?
I'll defer to my daughter-in-law.
I'm Paula Keef. I'm Barbara's daughter-in-law. And what we're looking to do is sell environmentally-friendly, safe household cleaning products at the farmer's market. We feel that this would be a great compliment. Not only are we selling local food that are good for you, but also cleaning products that would be helpful for your home. Our products are Wow Green is the brand name, and they are EPA-approved products. They're only, they're comprised of only four ingredients, and they're actually ingestible, so if a child or a pet was to eat or drink them, you wouldn't have to call poison control. We use them exclusively in our home. I have children and pets. And we just felt that this would be something that the Situate community would embrace, given that, you know, people are looking to be more green and environmentally-friendly these days. Me personally, this is passionate for me because I am the president and founder of the Go Green web directory, which is a state resource for, it's basically the green pages. So we're putting together a resource for those of us that live here in Massachusetts to be more eco-friendly. So this is how we became involved, and we use them exclusively within our homes. And we just thought that this would be a great compliment to the farmer's market.
Just so long it's not BP endorsed. I'm all in favor.
We brought some to demo, but I'm not really sure that's necessary.
Discussion from the board?
Just a quick, how many, is it one product?
There's 12 products, because they're household cleaning, so there's laundry, toilet, all-purpose, wood and dust.
Stainless steel.
Stainless steel. But each of the products is only comprised of those four ingredients. It's just a variation of how much of a, it's a cell-based, a protein, cell-based derivative, water, essential oil. So depending on what that particular product does, you would have a variation in ingredients, and that's it. But there's 12 of them. We would be looking to sell them individually. We have a stain remover. It's called the Super Stain Remover Pen that we do.
Which will take out permanent magic marker from a carpet. We can even show you that.
But just things that would interest, and see, would interest the community. We wouldn't be looking to, you know, push small containers.
John, just one general question. I know there's been a huge demand for this market. How much more can we take in that limited space that we have? I've never been, because it's during the day on Wednesdays, but are we getting to the maximum, or are we?
I feel we are.
We are?
I feel by the end of this season, going into next season specifically, we're starting to wind down, probably September, we'll see if we can manage into October. The response has been phenomenal from the vendor side, as well as the public office side.
How many more, but do we have room for two more people?
We certainly do. And what we're looking at is actually, right now, we run along one side of the parking lot. We're thinking of condensing it and running two lanes of vendor groups, so we have the parking lot.
Okay. So there's no space problem in terms of adding any more vendors?
Right now, no. Next year, I do proceed. If the momentum continues, we'll see spaces being an issue, mainly for public safety, because there's some re-chiming that are at-market with the vendors and with our patrons.
Great. Well, if you keep getting all the press you've been getting, then, you know, this could be a good problem to have, you know?
Any further questions?
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a Hocker's Peddler's license for Barbara Keef, 28 Central Park, to sell eco-friendly products at the North Situate Town-owned commuter rail parking lot in front of the WA building from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Wednesdays until October 31, 2010. This license has a temporary waiver of the 15-minute rule of Selectmen's policy 4399.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Any discussion from the floor? Discussion with the board, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you. Come see us.
We will. I'm looking for Z. Ice Cream, and I'm sorry, Zaid A. Abu Sharik. Is there anybody here for that? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to move on to the next one, which is a Hocker Peddler's license to William A. Severs, doing business at Gorilla Enterprises of 16 Upton Street, Hanson, Mass. Mr.?
Severs.
Severs. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Come on up. What are you looking to do, Mr. Severs?
Well, I'm looking to sell my homemade Bloody Mary mix.
Gotcha.
It's, I manufacture it at an approved restaurant in Bridgewater, and bottle it there, and distribute it from my house.
You have any samples, at least of the mix?
I was gonna do that, and I said, "No, I better not, because I can't bring in the alcohol."
No, no alcohol, just the mix. That's all I asked for. Okay. We saw this before, and unfortunately, you weren't here for that, so.
Right.
Questions from the board?
My only question is just a legal one, and I assume I know the answer, but we don't have any problem selling alcohol-related things? Okay. Just wanted to confirm.
And there's no alcohol.
I couldn't imagine you would. And there's no alcohol accompanying?
There's no alcohol in it, and it's used for other purposes other than Bloody Marys.
Correct.
I have a couple of friends that use it as a marinade on their chicken. Then I've tried it myself, and it's dynamite.
No, it's good. It actually works pretty well on fish, too.
Yep.
Everything works good on fish, though.
Everything, anything.
But, yeah, okay, just wanted to confirm that there was no implied thing.
Mr. Harris, did you have questions?
Nope, nope, nope.
And you make this in your, at a restaurant?
At a restaurant.
Do you have all the type of health?
I have her permit from the town of Bridgewater. Of course, she passes inspection. She has a stainless steel kitchen.
Right.
And I use her dishwasher to sterilize the bottles, make the mix there, bottle them, and cap it.
And our motion, our draft motion, would explicitly note that this license would be subject to Board of Health approval in this town.
Fine. I have, like I said, I have her permit from the Board of Health.
I guess it's just like making brownies, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Motion? Motion, please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a Hocker Peddler's license to William A. Severs, DBA Gorilla Enterprises, from 16 Upton Street, Hanson, Mass., to sell a Bloody Mary mix and marinade at the North Situate Town-owned commuter rail parking lot in front of the WPA building from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Wednesdays until October 31, 2010. This license has a temporary waiver of the 15-minute rule, Selectmen's policy 43-99. This license is subject to the Board of Health approval.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Just a question on the one that we were gonna hold off on until I assume, nothing to do with you, on the ice cream truck.
Thank you.
He's not selling ice cream in town now, is he?
I was just gonna suggest, there's go down to Board of Health right now, and they're still open.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
This ice cream truck isn't in town now.
No, it is not.
All right, okay.
No, it is not.
Moving on, agenda item number five. We're looking to award a contract with the auditor, I guess the town accountant. So, basically, Trish?
This contract actually was awarded by the prior town administrator for three years with renewable option for two more, equaling five. As you may recall, the town hadn't accepted the statute to do that until last fall. And it's also over the threshold that, under the charter, the board must approve it. So, working with the current vendor, he complied with our request, it's a one-year contract, which will do the FY10 audit, FY19, National Audit. It's ready for you to review once you can schedule it. I might just do it sort of one-on-one with you, since your agenda's, you'll probably get busy in the fall. So this is just a one-year contract for the 29-9 for the FY10 audit, both towns.
So let me back up. In other words, it's one-year contract. Were we under an obligation for three years and plus two, or where are we at with that originally?
The contract, we bid it under 30B for three years plus a renewable additional two.
Two, okay.
Which we don't, didn't at the time have the authority to actually.
To do, okay.
So where are we now?
So where are we right now, is what I'm trying to figure out.
Now, we're doing a one-year contract.
Okay.
This contract is professional services, so it's actually exempt under 30B. But when you do a three- or five-year contract, which we can do going forward, you do follow 30B process to get the best price, but.
The only question I had was the pricing. Is that something that's reasonable? I have no basis to determine that.
It's on the low end.
Okay.
Around the same numbers as last year?
Yes.
And the same firm?
Yes.
Any other question? Sure, take a motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen?
Can I, just a question?
Yes, Mr. Murray.
Not to, I'm in favor of this, obviously, but just for discussion. So, this is a one-year gig. Is it common practice to change auditors every three or four years, as like many financial firms do, or other board, other private entities do, just as a matter of business, to get a fresh look at?
I've heard that approach. I've experienced that approach. I really don't think it matters. Sometimes a new administrator will change it, or go out to bid when they haven't been out to bid. You've actually gone out to bid, but your indicated available appropriation has been determining pretty much what you get for a bidder, rather than scope for services.
Okay. So we'll be looking at that in a year?
Yeah, I'll be doing it for the, this fiscal year, for the, in FY12, for the FY11.
Correct, correct. I'm all set. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Motion again?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for financial statement and single audits in Massachusetts DOE end-of-year report audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2010, to Roselli and Clark and Associates of 500 West Cummings Park, Suite 3500, Weber, Mass., in the amount of $29,900.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, by a hair. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Good. Moving on to agenda item number six, which happens to be an award contract for a bucket truck, and on behalf of that is Mr. Bangert, Mr. Bangert from the DPW. It looks as though that what you're looking for is an appropriation from us, well, you've already got the appropriation, but you're looking for us to approve, basically, $70,000 for a 2005 International Bucket Truck with about 61,000 miles on it. It's been inspected twice by the DPW. You had authorization from a year ago at the 2009 Annual Town Meeting for a brand-new truck in the amount of $130,000. And so you're saving the town basically $60,000 by getting a used vehicle. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
You actually took everything I was gonna say, summarized it very nicely, and I have nothing to add, other than the, we'd like to authorize the purchase of this excellent used truck, which we think is a good position for the town to be in, because this truck that we have today, from 1967, has reached the end of its life. We would expect that this new truck, this new used truck, would probably last us for the next 15 to 20 years as well. So we're very confident that this is a good move by the town to purchase this truck.
Questions from the board?
These two motions are to, one, do the money, and then, second, for this particular one.
The first one is to temporarily borrow the money from the town.
Yep.
Before it gets bonded.
Okay.
Motion? Please.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to interfund advanced borrow $70,000 for the recommendation of the treasurer-collector?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, any from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? Unanimous, okay. Second.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for the purchase of a 2005 International truck equipped with Tarex Bucket Lift to James A. Kylie Company of Somerville, Massachusetts, in the amount of $69,497?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
I assume the truck's gonna be painted, from the white that it is, or?
Keep it white.
You're gonna keep it white, okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is an award contract for Musquashka Pond, and on behalf of the applicant, it's, again, Mr. Bangert, Mr. Cafferty from DPW.
This is actually for two change orders to Weston and Sampson, which is the design engineer, and the value's over $25,000, so I'll bring it before the board. The first item is, town has submitted to the DPD application for installing the sewer in and around Musquashka Pond. It's part of the long-term plan of updating the town sewer, and the work is currently with the DPD for review and comment. We've had some changes with the design engineer, and we're looking for approval on it. One thing we have them doing is applying for low-interest loans with the state revolving fund, which would be a 2% loan, which is actually a very good rate. We have changed the design from the original pump station that was on the Barrier Beach, and applied it and put it to one, which will be less impact and allow us to go forward with it. We've had some additional survey work. We also have the engineering firm doing the easement drawings. We have a couple easements that have changed around that we will have to get. And we're also looking for them to evaluate the Sandy Hills pump station, make sure we do all this work, and the next pump station up the line can pump it to the plant. And also, we want them to complete the SRF application through the Water Pollution and Baitment Trust for us. And the additional costs, our estimate costs $37,000 for this work.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Harris? Do you know at this time where the pump station's gonna go? Did you say you're gonna consolidate?
Yes, we know, we know where the pump station's gonna go.
We just need an easement.
No, it's actually, it's on town land.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we need easements. Anytime we run the new sewer line down private roads, because the town doesn't own them, we need to get an easement and file it with the Registry of Deeds. So it's, it's for that type of work.
Two easements, construction and then a permanent, right?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Where's it gonna go?
Um, talk happily. We have the plans, actually, in the other room. I could've brought them in.
Okay, no problem.
It's gonna be on the, what's the name of that street?
Woods Ave? Eli?
No, it's, it's before that. Cut us off guard. Next time.
Yeah, no, it's all right. I mean, nobody's.
Actually, the, the good news in this is that when the original project went forward, it didn't, was not eligible for SRS subsidized loans. It's now become, looks like it's gonna be eligible for that. So that's one of the reasons why we're asking for additional engineering money, so that the permitting and application can be handled by them for us. So the fact that the project is potentially now eligible for these loans will lower the cost of the project in terms of the price of the betterment for our residents.
Great.
Spending money now is gonna save us money in the long run.
Exactly.
Also, oh, are you done? I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Actually, hold on. Tony had a question.
No, you can finish if you want.
Some of this funds will be to replace the water lines, or was that already?
That's the next, the next item that we'll, we'll talk about. There were two items on this.
Right, okay.
Tony?
So my question is more, these are change orders, so in the initial appropriation, are we still under?
We're still under the appropriation.
The original appropriation.
But it's just over the value of.
So I think in our packet, we did the second one first. Is that what's, so the first $30,000 is for this one, which is applying for the loan, removing the pump station, and the second one, which we'll get to a second, is that, is that the actual water lines?
Correct. The water lines are the $30,000 ones, the $37,000 additional scope to.
Okay, so they're just back.
They were just talking about this.
Right.
Just think about the sewer one first.
Right, so the, great. And both of them are within the original appropriation? The change order falls within the scope?
The sewer one is within the appropriation for the sewer project.
The water one would come out of the water funds.
We're going into a new area with a water project in a second.
Okay, so the first one is this one.
It's for a sewer, and it's within that appropriation.
And a few things in your, I mean, Al does a great little summary for us.
Kevin did this one.
Or Kevin, you know, we get the scope of what's going on. The two things that jumped out to me were, the water lines are from 1906, and it's gonna help reduce brown water, which I think we've all seen a little bit of.
That'll be on next topic. The other topic that I wanna go through.
That's not this one?
No, that's the next one.
Sewer, sewer.
Thirty thousand, thirty thousand.
Yeah, but we've been talking about this.
Okay.
Okay. Question, Mr. Harris?
Just a general question. If I live in that neighborhood of Musquashka, and, you know, it would apply to the other ones previously, but if I'm in Musquashka Pond area, and I had just done a major upgrade, private system, can you just tell us, I might know the answer, but I'm not sure, how much time do I have to tie into the town sewer? Do I have to tie into town sewer? And what if I wait 10 years? Do I still have the right to tie in?
Yes.
I do.
However, you will recharge the betterment.
Right, whenever that time comes. But if I had just made a major upgrade to my property, then I don't have to tie in.
And your, continue to be, your property continues to be eligible to connect.
But don't you only have a certain timeframe by which you can pay the betterment over 20 years? If you tie in after X years, after too long, you have to write a check, right?
Well, actually, the betterment starts the day that the betterment starts. And then, once, once, once it's announced that there's a betterment, you have 30 days to come in and pay that off in total.
Yep.
Okay? Or you can roll that into your taxes, and then have it spread throughout the 20-year period. And quite frankly, the treasurer-collector is more experienced in exactly what those steps are. But you have a period in which you can pay without interest the betterment in full, or roll it over. That has nothing to do with when you hook up.
Right, but if I, if, as Sean was saying, if I come in 10 years from now, and I wanna hook up, I still need to pay whatever the betterment is.
You're paying the betterment whether you hook up or not.
You're gonna have to pay the hook-up fee. You've been paying the betterment for 10 years.
Right.
If you just put in a new system, and you happen to be on the street where a sewer's going, you have to pay the betterment.
You're gonna pay that betterment fee. And then, the question is, assume that your Title V septic system fails, or, you know, and so then you can say, you know what, I'll pay the, right now, it's $5,000, the hook-up fee to cook in.
I got you, got you.
Your property is bettered by the fact that it has, I mean, this will sort.
Access, yeah, yeah.
It becomes more valuable.
Got it.
You could remove the Title V system if you wanted to.
Yeah, just one more. And if you had a guess, I'm not gonna hold you to it. When would those residents be tying in? And I'm not gonna, one year, two years? I'm not gonna hold you to it, 'cause I know DEP can, you know, have different ideas and changes and stuff.
What I was, what I was gonna get into the second part of this is the water lines, what, and I'll give the little, my little talk on the water lines, but.
Hold on, before you do, though.
Generally, it's, we're probably.
I'd say it's probably a two-year project. It's a lot of work.
Questions from the board? I was gonna ask if there are any questions from the audience before we move.
Do you want a motion on Part B?
Um.
Part A.
Because they're separate motions.
Part B's the one they've been talking about.
Part B.
The 37 grand?
Okay, I started out of order. I didn't realize it was the need to be.
Right, it's Part B.
That's why you're looking at the same thing I am, which is the 1906 water lines. Good, okay. Why don't we do Part B?
Move the Board of Selectmen award the contract amendment for the engineering services to Weston and Sampson in Peabody, Mass., for an amount not to exceed $37,000 for items 1 through 6 listed on the topic document pertaining to the Musquashka Pond area.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now let's move on to Part A.
To water.
The town has submitted to the DPD the application for the sewer in and around Musquashka Pond. One of the problems that we do have is, we're gonna be repaving all these roads in this area, and some of our water lines date back to 1906. We've got our life out of these water lines, but it's probably time we replace these. So what I'm asking for is an additional $30,000 to award to Weston and Sampson as a change order to review and redesign, come up with a plan for replacing the water lines in the Musquashka area. We've got some lines, like off Eli Ave, that there might be a one-inch or a two-inch service. There's no fire protection over there, because you can't attach a hydrant to a one-inch service, and it's feeding four to eight houses. So I think before we pave any roads, we have to update, update those water lines. And that will be a source that, that is a source of brown water. It's not the end-all sources of brown water, but it is, it is one contributor fact, contributing factor to that area. And it'd be an improvement in the system. So this is just for the design plan. Probably, depending on what the cost estimate is to do it, we might have to look for additional funds at town meeting next year to replace the water lines also in this area. But at least we're getting the design plan down and figuring out what we have and how much implication we have.
And by doing it this way, as Kevin's idea, is that Weston and Sampson has already done all the surveying, the test drawings, they know everything, the geographic work. They will know where all the properties tie in. They can do the engineering in concert with the sewer work for probably one-third of the cost of the engineering would cost ordinarily. And we know that for a fact, because we know what it's cost us to engineer other water line replacements in town. So it's definitely the way to go for doing this work. And another idea he brought to the table is that whenever we're gonna do paving, we wanna make sure everything under that road is in good shape for the next 10, 15 years. And these water lines break. They are cast iron. They're the, they're the source of that, those, the pipes I brought in before. You see the tuberculation, they call it, with the, all the rust that builds up in it. This end-of-the-line area sees frequently brown water issues, and this will go a long way towards eliminating those brown water issues, bring better pressure to the area, because we'll be going from six-inch lines to eight-inch lines, or 12-inch lines, and we'll be better serving those residents. But probably the cheapest possible way to replace the water lines is when we're doing the sewer lines.
Questions from the board?
Go ahead, Tom.
Just two. The money's coming from the water enterprise, I mean?
This would come from the water enterprise fund for this, yes.
And out of retained earnings, Trish?
It's funded by the water appropriations.
So it'll be in, you'll find it in this year's fiscal budget?
It's in this year's fiscal budget, because money was awarded in the, in the rate increase. We'd be able to absorb it with.
In this year's capital plan, we included money for repl, engineering and replacement of water lines.
Oh, so has there been an appropriation for this already?
It was appropriated, yes.
Okay, thanks.
It's also part of the 5% increase, correct?
Right, and was funded by the 5% increase.
Okay, I didn't know that it was already on. And what do you think the scope, dollar-wise, is for replacing the $2 million to a ballpark of?
My initial ballpark estimate was 1.4 maybe, 1.6, somewhere in that area.
So somewhere between 1 and 2 million dollars to do the project.
So within the range of what you can fund.
And that's about what we've been doing every year. Great. Great.
Sean?
Just one last question, you just reminded me of when you're gonna resurface the street, you don't wanna have to dig it up again, what about storm drains? We had just talked about that earlier. Are they, are they old, do we even have storm drains?
We do have some storm drains, some of them are older, some of them are newer, um, a, a lot of times what we were doing is we would have either the highway department come in and repair the structures themselves, or, um, the contractor, we would, we would award him a change order to replace it as, as they went by and dug the area up.
Is that something, though, we should look at, though? I mean, I, 'cause, I mean, even if it doesn't have storm drains, obviously...
No, um, we can, and we, we have looked at it, it's, you know, we can, we can do a whole lot there, it's just, um, we, we get to a point where we start spending a real lot of money, um...
The only reason why I ask that is because right on that bend of Hadley Road, it's a, it's a major problem, um, because of the development upgrading, and I know that, um...
Those are the only fixes part of this.
Okay, there, good.
Question about the, um, other utilities in the area, I know when we were doing the cliffs, there's a couple places, on Third Cliff, my neighborhood, so I'm very familiar with it, where there's, the utilities are coming down the, the poles, and then they'll cross the street in the air to another pole, and then they'll come down and go into like the adjacent house, and I've, and, so you'll have like one wire just going across the street, and I thought, only in hindsight, boy, it sure, we should've been able to get the utilities companies to put that line underground while the street was all open, sort of thing, is there good discussion with Weston and Sampson on the, particularly these areas that get really windswept in terms of utilities? And I understand we're not gonna be putting everything underground, but there might be some key places at the same time that the streets are looking at that the utilities could be brought in the loop to put a couple things underground that would, that would do a couple things, one would be safer, and would also mean that cars and trucks going down the street don't have to worry about wires crossing the street as much, so just, if you could, just keep an eye on that as you're moving forward on this.
Um, utilities can't go underground unless the town has a bylaw requiring it, and then the surcharge is applied to the residents because it's tremendous, it's about ten times more expensive for the utility to go under.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm aware of that, but that, at, at least in a couple key cases, it might be worth, you know, just, just exploring it.
But, I mean, I think that that's something we can look at proactively going forward to put as many as we can underground.
Yeah.
Just for the exact example that you cited.
Yeah. Particularly for tearing up the road.
Yeah, particularly tearing up the road, exactly, yeah.
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move the Board of Selectmen award the contract amendment for the engineering services to Weston and Sampson, Inc., of Peabody, Mass. for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for water line replacement in the Musquashka Pond area.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani, discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
unanimous, all right, moving on to agenda item number eight, which happens to be a discussion and vote in finalizing the charge for the Pier Forty Four Building Options and Feasibility Study Committee. Tricia, you've provided us with this draft charge, um, at our last meeting, we've had an opportunity to review it, take a look at it, um, at this point, we're trying to finalize it so we can kinda move this forward, and gentlemen, what are your thoughts? I think we'd, uh, like to have some discussion, and this is, everybody had a chance to review the, the draft, and what are your thoughts about, uh, moving on with the proposed draft?
You wanna start?
Please.
Okay.
Tony?
Um, again, we talked, we talked about this the last meeting, I thought it's very encompassing and a, a, um, you know, very good document, um, the few things I brought up before, uh, which a, a lot of people agree with, is getting the times within lines so that we didn't have to worry about the money, I don't know if you wanna go over the letter we got?
Sure, yeah, that's fine, um, in essence, what Tony's referencing, I'm looking for the letter, our concern as a board is that the mitigation money from, money left over from the MBTA, uh, needed to be spent as of October thirty first of this year, and our concern as a board was that we needed to ensure that that money was not gonna be lost, and so, um, uh, on behalf of the board, a letter was sent to the MBTA requesting, uh, that they would extend the use of that money, and in particular, we, we had listed, uh, various items that we thought we could use the money for, one of which was for, uh, the Pier Forty Four, um, feasibility study and, and potentially, um, using the proceeds or the money for building it, so, we received the letter July twenty eighth, uh, it's, it's addressed to me, it's from the Assistant General Manager for Development, it's Markey Boyle, and basically, um, saying that, um, pursuant to our letter of July fifteenth, two thousand and ten, the MBTA mitigation funds, please be advised that the MBTA approves and acknowledges the town of situates' request and plan to utilize these funds for the purposes described in our letter of, um, July fifteenth, two thousand and ten, moreover, the town's request to expend those funds beyond November first, two thousand and ten, is approved, so, having said that, um, now, we're able to have a little bit more time to make sure that we can spend those and, and use them appropriately and adroitly, so, that having been said...
So, that was my biggest concern, that we didn't have the timetable set up in this chart, we're not gonna be, um, risk, you know, have us potentially, um, at risk to losing the funding, and that, clearly, that's not the case anymore, um, the only question, you know, again, I'm really excited about the committee getting together, I think their job is to come back with a variety of options for us to, to look at and ponder and hear all the details of for us to make the final decision on what is gonna happen in that property, um, my only question was the size of the committee and the makeup, um, in the first paragraph here, we talk about nine people, I wonder if nine people is too many to be productive, we have a couple of, of people here that are, maybe should be put on there, you know, one from Public, one from REC, one from Council on Aging, whether, whether we all feel that that's the right makeup of the group and then the six appointed ones, um, that was really the only point of discussion that I had, um, from the document. Sometimes I think if you get nine people on a committee, it's, it's, sometimes that can be too big of a number, um, but I think it depends on the makeup of the committee, so, I didn't know what your guys' sense was on the size of the committee.
Um, let's discuss that for a moment, um, 'cause you've raised a few points, I think we should, it's, it's worth discussing, um, initially, I'd say nine people, my personal view was, nine people might be a, a good size, but I also, after going through the Affordable Housing Trust with the number of people there, sometimes the committee members, it's, it's more efficient to have a smaller number, seven, um, might be a, a better number, um, so, I mean, I'm, I'm flexible, and, but, I mean, on the other hand, I'm not trying to preclude more people from participating, um, nine might be great, if some people miss the meetings, then at least you have more, um, at least more input, I think, other issue that you raised, Tony, that I've looked at, I think a public building commission, somebody from that, I think, should be on it because you're dealing with a public building, I think it's important to have it, raising the issue of whether or not somebody from the Recreation Department or Council on Aging should be on it, not that I don't think they should participate, I think, I, I, just the question is, do we mandate under this charge that there has to be somebody from there? I, I, I think that's a fair question, too, and I'm, I'm open to discussion on that point, those are the two items that I thought, you're right.
Um, Mr. Chair, thank you, first, I'm, I am pleased to see that we got that MBTA letter, so, that, that's resolved in, in the rearview mirror with us, nice job on that, Tricia and, and everybody for working on that, and John for your letter, and Kim as well, um, I have two comments that we will, which, and the first is this one, which we'll talk about now, I do think nine is too much, um, and, uh, I think, I actually think we probably should not have someone from REC, and probably should not have someone explicitly from Council on Aging because those are several of the potential uses that have been bandied about, and, um, but I do wanna say that, you know, like you just said, John, that, um, you know, just because the committee might be smaller than nine doesn't mean people can't participate, and these, again, will all be open meetings and well-advertised, and people can participate whether they're a member of the committee or not, um, so I'd prefer to see it down to seven members, you know, when, when committees start up and a project, even one is visible, as Pier Forty Four happens, everybody's like, oh, yeah, this is great, and it seems like everybody's coming out of the woodwork, but then when the dark days of January come and it's snowing out, and, you know, do you wanna, do you, do you really wanna get up and, and get going into that meeting, attendance teams to, seems to drop, and then you could end up with, um, you know, quorum issues and all that sort of thing, so, I think we're more likely to, to have success with a committee of about seven, and, um, I do think we need to have, as you said, Mr. Chair, uh, someone from Public Building Commission, absolutely, um, and I, I think we should, I'd suggest that we have seven members, we appoint six of them, and, uh, one is appointed by the Public Building Commission, and then I think it's incumbent upon us to, um, review the applications and ensure we get a diverse set of skills in there, and I, I hope people from, you know, environmental side or, or, uh, people who are familiar with wa, water permitting or permitting act, permitting issues, you know, waterfront property, people who know zoning, people who know, um, recreation or, or other things would apply, and then it's incumbent upon us to staff this committee accordingly, but I think we should, should really do it that way.
Just...
Mr. Harris?
If we, if we so choose to have nine on this committee, five have to be present for a quorum, correct? And if we have seven, four?
Yeah.
I, I agree with what Rick you had said, everyone's enthusiastic in the beginning, but I don't, you know...
The difference between four and five is only one.
That's true, that's, that's, and, and there were so many people that have, you know, approached all of us, so I, I could go either way, I'll pick my battles, and, um, I, I'll give and, have a little give and take on that one, but, a representative from the Council on Aging, the last meeting, and I could've gone either way, I could, I saw both sides of the, that coin, but at the last meeting at the Council on Aging, they made it very clear to me that they would like a representative from the COA on this committee.
Mm-hmm.
Whether I agree with it or not, I'm bringing the, well, and I can see their point, so I'm not, I'm not saying I don't agree, but I'm bringing that message back, that they would like a rep from their organization, they even mentioned a person by name, and I think that person has written us a letter that said she didn't really want to be in that position, but I haven't heard from the rest of the Council on Aging, maybe someone else wants to step up.
Mm-hmm.
There are about, what's our population, eighteen thousand people in the town, there are four thousand people that are seniors, it's almost, you know, twenty-five percent, so, for that, I would, I would, I personally would like to see someone from the COA and on it, al, along with, along with public buildings, there isn't anybody that probably knows more about buildings than some of those people in that group, or you have engineers, you have architects, and you have builders.
I, I agree, I understand your point, and I, and I absolutely understand, and I just wanna point out, we're using Council on Aging just as an example here, it's not that we're, I mean, a very appropriate example, but we're not picking on one committee or another committee, I would have no problem with appointing somebody who is also on the Council of Aging, that's a, a citizen who is also on the Council of Aging, right?
Mm-hmm.
But that's very different to me from legislating...
That, that, a, a member has to be on the COA?
Right.
All right.
You know?
Tricia, I gotta...
There's a subtle difference, but, but, 'cause I do think all constituents should be represented as well as possible, but I, I just hesitate about having it dictated to us.
Question to you, is that, I noticed in the draft charge that under Phase Two, that we as a board have the ability to, um, to reserve the right to release members and appoint new members as part of Phase Two, um, I think we need that language, I was gonna say in Phase One, because one way we could address the issue is, if we have that, I'm just trying to find it, maybe I'm missing it, um...
Just wait, I think it's, it's...
Is that, um...
Right here, page two.
Where is it, that we can release?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I asked that because I'm...
It's the high...
Oh, right here, I, I, Jesus, it's the highlighted part, folks, sorry about that.
Actually, the, the preface there before the, the dashes, John?
Yep.
It allows you to release members at any time and/or to also appoint additional members.
Okay, the reason why I ask that...
If you have seven, and that could do two, two later, or, you know, it gives you some flexibility.
The reason why I ask that is because if it turns out that we went with nine and we were saying that, you know, they're gonna have a problem with a quorum, um, I'll be candid with you, I mean, I can understand circumstances, if somebody misses two meetings, then my attitude is, they, they, they don't have enough time to deal with it, and I'd be willing to pull the plug on their appointment, um, to try to accommodate, I think the one thing about this property is, obviously, it's unique, there are a lot of people who are very passionate about it, um, if you go with nine, there's gonna be a lot of discussion, I hope it doesn't bog the committee down, um, but on the other hand, maybe it will be some better input, more input, maybe it's worth going with nine, if it turns out that it's sluggish and they're not getting stuff done, or, or that, um, um, they're, they're not able to have their meetings or their quorums because of the lack of, of attendance, then I'd be inclined to say then, we'll pull that, and then say, move it down to seven or, or accordingly, that might be an option. Tony?
Just, uh, two quick points, I, I agree with you, my concern wasn't so much, um, the, the makeup of the committee at this point, it was whether nine can be productive and the meetings would take three hours instead of an hour and would get people disinterested, um, the one thing that we just have to make very clear is that if you're not on the committee, it, it doesn't mean you're missing the opportunity to make the decision that happens at this, with this facility, we're the group that makes the decision, this is just a, a committee that's going in and doing the research and the groundwork and the brainstorming and, you know, um, if, the committee's not gonna come back and say, uh, build an ark there, and that's what's happening, you know, they're gonna come to us with five or six feasible options, and then the Board of Selectmen at that time will make the decision as to what ends up being chose there, so, um, you know, maybe, that being said, and Rick's comments that it's all, it's an open meeting, everyone can participate, and whether you're sitting in the audience or sitting at the front table, you're still gonna have a voice, and then ultimately, it's gonna come to this committee to make the decision, may make some sort of an impact, um, I think you were going down the path that says, look, let's try it at nine, and if it's not working, then we can always change it to seven, um, that's fine with me also.
That's fine with me.
So, I, Tricia, to comment, you said something above the dash lines there, you said, it explicitly says that we can release or appoint, but the...
The second graph right there.
The second paragraph of the, of the page one.
Point additional members, or you reserve the right to release members and appoint new members.
But it says as part of Phase Two.
As part of Phase Two.
I would like, if we could change that to say at any time.
That's what I was saying, I was saying, maybe we should put in Phase One and Two.
So, at any time?
Yeah.
Could we...
If we add language like that, that gives us the flexibility.
Yeah, at any time.
I would just say at any time on that, and so then, you know, given this conversation, um, and, uh, Mr. Harris, your points about picking battles and so on, and Tony's comments and everything, I, I guess I'm, I'm fine with nine, but I would, I would still maintain that I'd prefer not to have it as scripted, I, I'm, I'm fine with, actually, if we have nine, we appoint eight, and the Public Building Commission makes a recommendation to us as to who they think they appoint, and we approve or disapprove of that individual, but, um, that would be my preference.
And then someone from public buildings?
That's what I mean, no, no, no.
Someone from public buildings, and then...
Eight at large, eight at large, and the Public Buildings Commission recommends to us who they think, and we approve or disapprove of that, because there might be...
So, we appoint nine.
So, we appoint all nine, and one of those would be, um, either from a list or recommended by public buildings. And, again, my comment about if one of those people happens to also be serving on, on the Council of, Council on Aging, that's fine, just like if someone happens to be serving on, on zoning, or, um, you know, one of the other things, I, I do think, though, we will, we wanna make, be careful that we don't, um, you know, pick one person from planning, one person from zoning, one person that, we don't want a committee of committees, you know, we really do want these to be at large.
One other quick question on this topic is, should a selectman be on this committee?
I, I, my feeling on that would be, um, no, because ultimately, the selectman will make the decision as to what to do with it, however, I think, um, one of, somebody from this board should be a liaison to this committee, and I think should attend the meetings, as many as he can, um, to kinda give us feedback on it, but ultimately, I don't think they should be a decision-maker in it because, I think, ultimately, we will be the one.
I agree with John.
Liaison's good, so should, should, who's gonna be the, um, ringleader in terms of organization, should we, is there any way to find that person?
I, um...
What do you mean?
No, let's...[1665.41] No, let's-
Like a chair of a committee?
Should Tricia be the chair? Should somebody, somebody-
I think what we need to do is, I think we need to identify the group of people, go through the process of figuring out who they are, and then when we select them, then ultimately, we should, I think that's the way it's put here, they will have a meeting before us, maybe a, a joint meeting, is that, is that, and then they will have to convene and, and appoint somebody to be their chair.
Correct.
Be, um, is that kind of-
Yeah, I guess we look at the applicants and see if, I guess that would be the first step.
So I would, um, so, so that's my feeling on the composition. Are we in some sort of agreement on that, or?
Just to sum it up, we're going to appoint all nine, and we're going to ask for recommendations from-
Public building for one of us.
Public building for one.
And then the modification is, we can change that composition at any time.
Good.
I have no problems with that. Are we okay with that?
And I will say this, I mean, with Council on Aging, I'm not, I'm not adverse to saying that somebody from Council on Aging shouldn't participate. I think that's certainly-
If that person, I think what Rick is saying, if that person is, seems to be a good fit.
Yep.
And the fact that they're on the COA, that's not going to help, not going to hurt.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Oh, I, I just wanted to be very clear, I, I personally think it would help, but I just don't want it to be, you know, to be scripted.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correct, we're going to go with nine members on the board, or the committee, all appointed by the Board of Selectmen. One, however, will be from the Public Buildings Commission, and they will nominate that person who we will then-
Well, they can nominate two, or three, or whatever, and we'll pick one, how, how they want to do it.
Yeah. And aside from that, Tricia, the only changes that we'd add is, at any time, the Board of Selectmen can discharge one of these appointees if we need to, and the rest of it stands.
Um, actually-
Yep.
There's another issue I wanted to bring up that was independent of the Constitution.
Okay, so we, we talked about that.
Yep.
We addressed Tony's. Mr. Murray?
On the bottom of page one, it says the, as part of its charge, the, the committee shall address the following critical issues during Phase One, and it says a priority list of issues.
Uses.
Sorry, a priority list of uses, uses. My preference, I'm not exactly sure what's meant by that wording, and there might be other wording that I've missed somewhere else, but I actually do not want a prioritized list from this committee. You know, that they say, we have, our number one priority is this, and our number two priority is that, and our number three priority is that. Just because the committee may have all good intentions, but they still are unlikely to have the broadest view of all the things going on in town, and all the financial ramifications thereof. What I would really like is this committee to give us a list of acceptable, from their point of view, through their, through their vetting process, of, you know, these three things we think would be great. There'll be an implied priority, I mean, any committee I've ever worked on or sat on or observed, there's going to be an implied priority anyways, but I just really would be uncomfortable having it so articulated, that like, this is our number one pick, and everything else is, is secondary or tertiary to that. So I, I'd feel much better if there was like, you know, the, these are the ones that we think would really work out well. Here's the constituency behind one of these, here's the constituency behind the others, here's what some of the positives of this one are, here's what the negatives of this one are, here's positives of the other one, and negatives of the other ones, and just sort of give us the full, the full suite in, in that regard, rather than, than picking one, or two, or three in a ranked order.
That makes sense to me. I, 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 I agree. I think that decision is for the Board of Selectmen to decide, and, but the, this committee is going to put together some possibilities, and for multiple uses or single use, and come before us, we'll take a look at them, and ultimately, we're the decision-maker. So they'll make a list of them, and, you know, I think that's a pretty astute. Any other comments on that, or other points?
I'd just like to thank Tricia again for putting together this, this draft charge. I was anticipating a, you know, the standard half-page, and then when we got this sort of thing, it was like, there's all sorts of issues in here I never even thought of, that she, you just anticipated and put together real well ahead of time, and pre-thought of everything, so thank you very much for this.
Tricia, the one other thing that, you know, Tony just commented on, which I think is true, we have these dates set for October, March 3rd, is it? March 1st of next year and October 1st of next year. Should we make those dates, not that we're trying to delay anything, but should we make them a little more flexible, that it's anticipated that they should, may have them by these dates as, as opposed to shall?
Or that we have the, we have the ability to change, yeah.
So that way, that way, I mean, I, the last thing I'd hate to see is somebody come in here and say, you didn't finish this by March 1st, you know, and frankly, the committee might need another month or two to figure out things due to exterior influences, you know, for whatever.
So what do they like say, instead of shall complete, shall endeavor, or?
The, the committee shall endeavor to try to complete Phase One and Phase Two of its work by March 1st.
That's good.
Okay.
As opposed to shall, take out shall and then no later than. And I think that, that gives it flexibility, because it's like anything, the hope is to get it done by those dates, but that's a good point, Tony.
So no motion is needed? Do you need a motion for this, or?
They do. So I would move that we accept the amended charge for the Pier 44 Building Options and Feasibility Study Committee as per the document presented to us tonight, with the modifications that we just articulated.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani, a discussion? Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
So this is probably a good time to ask people to get in their applications.
Good. If you're interested, start filing an application with our office, and I, I think, Kim, there's one online, is that it, or is there, for the form, or is it something that?
We do a form online, and also people could simply write a letter of interest, if they'd like to include their qualification, they can, it's not necessary. Also, I've received notification from quite a few individuals, probably fifteen or twenty, that I just, I had their email addresses, and I was going to take this opportunity to contact them again and ask them to, you know, resubmit. There, it's just been one line of interest.
Some of those, we four, I'm, I've been contacted.
I four, and I assume the same with you guys.
So I will be contacting most people that are on their case.
What I would like to consider, and I table it for the board, is to suggest that contact those people, if the press would be so kind to at least put it in the newspaper-
Please.
-once or twice, that would be helpful. We don't reconvene until August 31st. If you have those applications, at some point, I like to have a initial meeting with some of the applicants, and then kick it over for the next meeting, but I think, is that September 7th?
Seven, yes.
So that's like back-to-back. I'm not sure if that's too close or not, but I'd be happy to entertain the boards. My thought is like, if there's a two-week interlude, meet people at the final time, and then try to finalize that board.
Finalize on the 7th.
My, my, the 7th or the next meeting, just so that if people are on vacation, they might not hear about this, because it's the month of August, so I just want to make sure everybody gets fair notice. I know the news will definitely give them fair notice, but it's just, you know, if they're not there to read it.
I'd just like to add, I think, Kim, we can put the charge up on the website. I think this committee is decidedly different than some other committees in the past. I mean, it's, the nature of the work of this committee is space allocation, building redesign, adaptive reuse. It's not sort of generic in terms of, oh, you know, maybe this or maybe that. It's a real, you know, homework, cost estimating, retrofitting kind of work, so I'd encourage people contemplating, if they're watching, to serve. We'll get the charge, now that it's approved, up on the website, and refer to that.
Good. So that would be good, and then we'll get them going in September.
That's a good calendar.
All right.
Then someone might feel that they're not cut out for that, and, and where they might have thought earlier.
Right.
Vice versa. Great.
All right, good. Congratulations, that's excellent. Let's move on to the next agenda item, which happens to be Agenda Item Number Nine. It's an acceptance of a gift from the Recreation Department.
It's like a motion?
Actually, with the clerk, Mr. Vignani, could you just read a little sense, just so people understand what we're doing?
Sure. On behalf of the Recreation Commission, I would like to thank you. This is a letter to Mr. Jacks, is it Steve or Steb?
Uh-
From the Situate Rotary Foundation.
Steve.
I'd like to thank you for a donation in the amount of $300. We were able to provide a scholarship to a child to attend summer camp. We truly appreciate the Situate Rotary's Foundation's generous donation, and this is written from Kim Peters of the Recreation Department.
Thank you. Now I'll take the motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the kind gift of a Situate, um, kind gift of the Situate Rotary Foundation for $300. This generous gift allowed the Recreation Department to provide a scholarship for a child to attend summer camp.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Murray. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. unanimous. Again, thank you very much for that. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, appointments. What it looks like is that we have, um, background, it's a list of the Situate Republican and Democratic election workers as recommended by their respective parties, and so, what we need to do is, we need to, um, do we need to list, read all of them, Kim?
No, you don't.
What we have to do is just say, move?
Move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Republican and Democratic election workers per the list provided by each of their respective parties.
Perfect. Who wants to second that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Discussion, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
Move the Board of Selectmen appoint Mark Sandham to the Street Acceptance Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor? Aye.
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 Move the Board of Selectmen appoint Harvey Gates as the Historic Commission's Liaison Member to the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor? Aye.
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 Mr. Harris, good, unanimous. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the Town Administrator's Report, Agenda Item Number 11. Trish?
Thank you. We have an attachment to the first item, which I hope one of you will read. The first item refers to the town settlement of the DPW union contract. The board voted and approved the terms of the agreement at its last meeting and executive session, so we can now make that public. In short, it's a three-year contract with DPW Laborers District Council Local 1162. It has previously been ratified by the union, and as I said, there's a press release, and before I segue over to that, I just want to particularly commend the DPW union and the bargaining team. As you know, all the union contracts on the town side expired June 30th of 2009, so we're now entering our fourteen-month with some contracts not settled. This is the first one. And again, I was very impressed with the quality and the caliber of the members in understanding the financial play of the town.
Thank you, Trish, and I have to say thank you to the union for, for helping the town out and, and working with the town. It's, it's commendable when, when unions and towns and the people benefit by it, and so commend them and commend you and the hard work that was done, and it's a quid pro quo. It's a great agreement, and we're very fortunate. It's golf marketing.
So did you want to do the press release?
Do you want to read it, or?
Yeah, because I didn't say much, thinking you were, otherwise I can get in the weeds with it.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Tony, do you mind reading just what the release that we have?
Great. The town of Situate and the Laborers District Council 1162 have agreed to a new three-year contract that will cover the period July 1st, 2009, through July, through June 30th, 2012. The Laborers District Council is comprised of members of the town, the town's Department of Public Works. The current contract expires in June, expired in June of 2009. The new agreement calls for no increase in employees' wage for fiscal year 2010, which ended June 30th. A 1% increase this year, and a 2% increase in fiscal year 2012. The contract also includes a new wage scale that compensates employees based on the number of licenses they hold, allowing the department to give greater flexibility in assigning jobs as a result of vacations or sickness, and to increase the in-house capacity, excuse me, capability for winter snow activities. The agreement also contains clearer language relative to the probationary period provided to the town to implement biweekly pay, and gives the town the authority to take certain actions for the purpose of securing favorable premiums or plans in the provision of health insurance. This agreement, this is quotes, "This agreement allows the town to make some management improvements and provides employees with the opportunity to raise their pay increments by obtaining additional certifications and licenses that will benefit the overall operations of the department," said Town Administrator Patricia Ficcezi. I, I, uh, I comment, I commend the bargaining team for understanding the difficult financial situation facing the town, and the cooperation and professional approach that they took in bargaining this new agreement. Board Chairman John Danahue, state of the board, is glad that this contract has been settled, and that he appreciates the willingness of the union to help the town grapple with the town budget constraints.
Thank you.
On the second item, which I've included some detail, is on a new golf marketing plan for Widows Walk, and as I note here, I've been meeting with Bob Sanderson over the past several months, along with Kathy Bullock, who's graciously donated her services to help us do some different marketing strategies at the course. And as I note here, we're working on a new and improved website. If anybody's been on the website in the last ten years, it looks exactly like it did ten years ago, and most of those photographs were taken by the management company two man, you know, two contracts ago. So we have all new photos, and Tom Rose is working on updating those. We have a number of specials, coupons, the online tea system is new this year. We've had a couple of briefs in the newspaper. I note here, we've been working with the, the food vendor Jamie for specials, starting in September, on Fridays, nine and dine, a number of other things. And, I mean, we're also sort of, International Golf Maintenance is updating the environmental aspects of the course relative to its Audubon designation and being a first demonstration golf course. You'll see the Audubon logo on the website, we just got those icons last week. The golf course, I think, we all know is a hidden jewel, but it needs a fresh coat of paint in terms of reaching out to other people in the area. We're trying to partner with Day Trippers on the boat, there's a stay-in-play at the inn at Situate Harbor. Bob is working on some other discounts downtown. The golf course lost $42,000 last year, and I think the way the financial reporting is done in prior years maybe didn't make that as transparent as possible. That is not something to worry about. It has retained earnings, and coming from a community whose golf course lost over half a million dollars for eight years, you know, I think Widows Walk is a huge benefit to the community and something that we should continue with in its present form, but again, just needs to sort of remind the area what a great place it is to golf. So golf's off a lot this year due to the economy, but we're still maintaining our numbers. I check them monthly, and we're very lucky with Bob and IGM and Jamie down there in the management. So I thought it was time to just give you a little update on it. We've been doing this for about, I think, since January, so.
If I could also just give a, a plug there, I was pleased to see that you've been talking with Jamie Miller about the food operator. Those of us with young kids, in, in particular, it's a really nice place. I take my family down there for breakfast on the weekend, and there's all sorts of people down there, there's people with kids, people without kids, and it's spacious, and the food's good, and it's inexpensive, and so I think broad, I'm just using that as an example of, of broadening the base, broadening the clientele, because as you all know, I don't golf. It's just, without my hockey helmet on, I don't do sorts of things like that. So, but there's a lot of different stuff that you can do down there, and I think it's really good to, to broaden that base.
Mr. Harris?
I was just going to comment, I believe Jamie's doing that now, there's a Women's Monday Night League. They do nine and dine now, and I've heard that, you know, his food is just fantastic.
It's hard to squish the special in, because we have a lot of regular leagues and outings during the week, so we've tried to identify times, and Jamie's actually looking forward to the Friday night one, so we can, he'll have like a prefix menu of three entrees, I think, and then that's what you'll get.
Yeah.
And then the other thing sort of related to that is, we'll be updating the town website, because again, a website, you know, needs to be static, and we really want it to, I mean, dynamic, not static, and-
I was going to say, wait a minute.
It seems static. I think we need to improve that.
We're not static, we're trying to make it dynamic. Wonderful website, but if you go to the homepage, I mean, my eyes glaze over, it's too busy, there's too much in it. We're really just going to go to a very passive homepage with just maybe one image, and then on the column sides or whatever, let people click to various links. We have a subcommittee of the Technology Subcommittee that's work made up of the support staff. I listed them here in your report, and I want to read them. We spent quite a bit of time, you know, making suggestions to the website, doing frequently asked questions for every department, and suggesting and other things. It's a work in progress, but again, hopefully you'll start to see some of those changes. And those committee members were Nicole Harris in the Building Department, Maureen Galvin in the Planning Department, Sue Frankel in the Library, Kathy Curran in the Town Clerk's Office, Mara Glansey in the Recreation Department, and Patty Longley from Assessing. Office, Maureen Glancy in the Recreation Department, and Patty Longley from Assessing. So stay tuned, and we'll certainly welcome the feedback once it gets up and running. And that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. That takes care of that. Moving on to other business, Agenda Item Number 12.
None.
None?
Ditto.
Mr. Harris, none? Mr. Vignani?
Well, I always feel obligated to say something, so.
Really quick, just for those watching, our Situate baseball teams have done phenomenally this year. They've done well in the sandwich tournaments that they've played in, they've done well in the Williamsport Tournament that they've played in, and they're going to Cooperstown in a couple weeks, so just kudos to everyone going out and watching the games, and all the kids that have played so hard.
Good. Anything?
Nothing.
The only thing I was gonna say is Heritage Day, folks.
Oh, that's right.
Starting out with Luminary on Friday, if you can get out to see the harbor, go out to the coast, it's gonna be beautiful, and of course, on Saturday, the music, and the vendors down on Front Street. There are also other events for like rowing, and I think the, what is it, the Dory Races Sunday, they have again the vendors, and, oh, there's the pig roast, and there's the golf tournament on Friday, so take a look at the Situate Mariner, it has the insert that describes what's going on with the music and the other items that are happening, and I think the historical buildings are open, so get out there and enjoy it if you're around. Outside of that, that's all I have. Mr. Banger, you had your hand up for other business?
I have a pre, item of other business, if I may?
Sure.
I'd like to give you a quick update on the status of the water reservoir, the water supply, and the water ban.
Okay. Not that I'm trying to say no, I guess my problem is, I think I might have to say no, only because of the new open meeting laws, because we haven't noticed it, so as an issue, if it's a private citizen under walking, I could, but as other business, I don't think we can, Mr. Banger.
Okay, that's fine. If I'm not mistaken.
What if I were to ask? Information topic only.
What, yeah, what are the three items again, Al?
It's just one topic, which is the status of our water supply.
Not the, that led to the water ban?
Yes. I want to just provide them with an update on where we stand with water restrictions.
I only say because it changed, the open meeting changed in July, effective July 1st, and I'm just, just don't want to be a foul.
Mr. Chair? What if I were to ask you if there was any update on the water supply status?
Again, it still comes a problem, because it's, and the reason, folks, is this, because we have agenda items, we list them, so that everybody has fair notice of it, and that's the only reason why, if we erase something that wasn't listed that was posted.
I think you have to notice anything you, you know, anything that you have.
So I think anything that we discuss.
Al, is it time-sensitive? If it's?
It is time-sensitive? All right, so that's the exception to the rule.
Given the fact that you won't be meeting until August 31st.
Okay, fair enough.
I'd like to just briefly update you on the fact that, as you know, about three weeks ago, we took our first step in water restrictions, we went to what we call Condition Orange, which is the odd-even restriction on outside use of water, and that they must use water only after 5:00 PM and before 9:00 AM. The, that step was taken to even out the extraordinary demand placed on the system, which resulted in the number of 24-hour days where we had to operate the water treatment plant, which puts us into the max-out supply mode. By going to that first step, which was odd-even watering, we evened out the demand, so that there was a better ability of the water department with current systems to keep up with the supply. The next step that has to happen is if, when the reservoir runs down to a certain trigger point, then we need to go to further restrictions, which is to restrict the use of water outside completely, so that the water can be used for domestic purposes. There are some limited areas in which water can be used for health and safety purposes, such as dust control on construction sites, watering of vegetable gar, excuse me, watering of vegetable gardens, and a few items like that. We are about nine inches away from the point at which we will need to enact a more, these more severe steps in water restrictions. If we have no rain between now and the next selectman's meeting, then we will be announcing that to be the next step in water restrictions taking place, so we have to pray for rain, which will then bring the reservoir back up to the point where that trigger point won't be reached. And these were trigger points agreed upon and voted by the selectmen in previous meetings when we established in 2008 a water policy. Okay?
Thank you.
Al, one quick question? So nine inches of reservoir is about one month's use?
No, it amounts to the level of the reservoir against a reference point. We are now 51 inches below the top of the reservoir's measurement point. When we get to 60 inches below the top, then we're to the point where we're in a dangerous condition, and we need to, not dangerous condition, it's the point at which we need to further restrict the outside use of water.
And I understand that, but my question was the date that you gave. You said the end of the month.
I'm just, I'm predicting that it's going down about an inch a day, and so we are maybe six to 10 days away from, with no rain, and no change in usage, that we will be to the point where we will need to restrict outside usage of water.
But you can make that restriction without a selectman's meeting, correct?
That's correct.
You need to do it, you don't have to wait.
That's correct.
So it might be sooner than that.
Yes, it might be within the next six to eight days, and I wanted to update you because I wouldn't get a chance to do it before your next selectman's meeting.
Mr. Harris?
I was just gonna ask you, Al, I don't know if you know the answer to it, does any type of rain help, whether it be a thunderstorm, or would you, I know for lawns, you'd have more of a real, more of a gradual rain, but does it all go to our reservoir, one as good as the other?
Actually, in these circumstances, heavy, fast rains such as thunderstorms are more effective in terms of getting the water, it runs off the soil and into the reservoir. The long, slow, driply rain does a great job moistening the earth, and that eventually then affects the wells, and we're happy with that as well.
Anything, yeah.
But either rain is good, thunderstorms are better.
As long as it's wet.
I have to say, when I was driving here today, or driving earlier in the afternoon, I was looking out at the reservoir, and I mean, you see that tree there?
Yeah.
I call it Joshua's Tree, because it's just sitting there, it's completely, you can see the ground, you can see the rocks, it's pretty low, so.
At home, I have my personal meteorologist, who comes from a farming background, who uses a device to track, has her own radar system, literally, to track the rainstorms that have come across Massachusetts in the last two weeks, and for whatever reason, the clouds come, the rain falls, and then it moves up to the north and to the south, and just bypasses us, so by the grace of whatever, we haven't had the benefit of the rain that, some of which has fallen in the area.
It's been terrific sailing, though.
Thank you, Al. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number 13, Correspondence.
Do you want to? Let me read the first one, since you've been doing a lot of reading, Mr. Clark?
Or the second one?
Whatever one you want.
All right. This is a letter from Jack Conway and Company, the Realtor, addressed to John Danahue, his chairman, and it's regarding the Fourth of July celebration. It says, "Dear John, many thanks to you and the entire Board of Selectmen, along with the other town officials, for being so magnanimous in your support of the Fourth of July celebration, which was promoted by Situate Post 144 of the American Legion. From the first time that we called Kim Donovan and asked for an opportunity to speak to then-chairman Joe Norton, the town was 110% in our corner. When you took over as chairman, you took over that support level, and it was most appreciated. All of the selectmen were great, as was our town administrator and the backup staff at Town Hall. Especially strong was our Chief of Police, Brian Stewart, who is always willing to help and always available for thoughtful direction and ideas, along with Chief Rick Judge of the Fire Department. As for your remarks, John, as for your remarks, John, they were fine. Thank you for bringing this story to our attention and tying it in with the idea of freedom in this great nation of ours. Best regards, Jack Conway."
Thank you.
And there's another one, from Jennifer Beecher. "I'm writing to express our heartfelt thanks to the town of Situate on behalf of my Pan-Mass Challenge teammates. Katina Bentley, Tracy Gallagher Shepherd, and I, all for great, all grateful Situate residents, are writing this year's PMC for Team Luca. Our team rides to honor three-year-old Luca Delisi, a former Situate resident who passed away in 2005 after bravely battling a brain tumor. We recently held a fundraiser, Touch a Truck Situate, which could not have been more well-received by our community. You may have seen advertisements for the event around the South Shore. We are nothing if not thorough. Many generous people donated their vehicles and time, and the event would not have been a success without their efforts. We would specifically like to thank Chief Stewart and Chief Mark, excuse me, Officer Mark Thompson, from our town's Police Department. Officer Thompson was instrumental in helping the event run smoothly, from providing an initial consultation regarding layout, safety, and required permits, to arranging the K-9 demonstration, and being personally on hand the day of the event with his cruiser and willingness to make people feel welcome. We'd also like to thank Chief Judge for approving his department's involvement, the kids loved the fire truck, and the crew who spent the morning delighting wide-eyed children. Lastly, we want to thank our community, the town of Situate, including the Historical Society, who graciously allowed us to use Larson Tower, the local post office, and the Highway Department for providing vehicles. They, along with generous supporters from the surrounding communities, helped make this event a success. Luca, a Situate resident and typical three-year-old boy, loved his mama and Dida, loved the harbor and sandy beaches of our town, and loved trucks. But less typically than a three-year-old, Luca never thought of himself first, he thought of others' happiness before his own. Because of this, I know Luca celebrated with us on that Sunday, witnessed the joy of the faces of so many children, and would be proud to call Situate his home. Again, on behalf of Team Luca, we thank you."
Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, it's the minutes.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the following sets of minutes, March 17th, 2009, August 4th, 2009, May 11th, 2010, May 12th, 2010, and June 8th, 2010.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our next agenda item, which happens to be pending litigation, collective bargaining, union and labor negotiations, non-union, and this is discussion that has to happen in executive session, because it would have a detrimental effect if it were discussed in open session, so, having said that, Mr. Donovan?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Danahue?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, folks. We'll see you on the 31st.